Commission to order, we will begin with our invocation this evening. I'm sorry, Rudy Garcia, please come forward and...
Good evening, Rudy Garcia with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Thank you for having me. Our dear, kind Father in heaven, we are so grateful to be gathered this evening, grateful to be here under the leadership of Jerry Nolte and these wonderful commissioners, county commissioners, who are sacrificing and serving so faithfully to support and strengthen our community. How grateful we are for them and their leadership and their sacrifices. Dear Father, we pray that we will be blessed with thy Spirit this evening, that the proceedings of this meeting will go according to thy will and will be of... to be edified and uplifting to all those that will be here. We pray that there will be peace and harmony in the discussions and that thy Spirit will dwell here. Father, we're so grateful for all of the residents of Clay County, and we pray for them and ask thy blessings to be with them as they go through their daily struggles and challenges. We, again, are grateful for all those that serve and sacrifice in this great community, and pray for their protection and that all will go well, again, in these proceedings this evening, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for this evening's agenda? Commissioner Withington, did you wish to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Okay. Of course, just for those watching, any commissioner is able to make an agenda or a motion as long as it is in order, which this obviously is. With that, motion has been made for the acceptance of this evening's agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Next on this evening's agenda are public comments. Are there any citizens wishing to make any comments this evening? If so, please come up to the podium, make sure the microphone is on, state your name, and then address the commission with whatever comments you would care to make. Seeing none, that brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items to be considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is approval of commission meeting minutes from January 9th, January 16th, and January 23rd. Resolution 2025-39 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from the period of January 25th to January 31st. There are 624 invoices totaling $3,719,888.83, and Resolution 2025-42, approved 2024 equitable sharing agreement and annual certification report for the sheriff's office.
Is there a motion for this evening's consent agenda? Commissioner Johnson?
I would approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Motion passes six-zero.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on the evening's regular agenda is 2025-38. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-38 is the request for waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to the county error. This is by Hallmark Marketing Company, and I believe that we are to have a representative for the applicant in the audience this evening.
If the applicant is present, could you please come forward? And as I said before, come forward to the podium, make sure the green light is on, state your name, and then go ahead with your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Travis Sorenson, I'm a tax compliance manager for Hallmark Marketing Company. I'm here to provide a little more details behind the payment that was for one of our personal property taxes, for one of our parcels. We have around 17 real estate payments that we make every December, along with five personal property payments as well. We make those electronically online. This year, in December, we made those all on the 13th of December, early, tried to make those early, timely, before the end of the month. We had one payment that the routing number was keyed in with one extra zero. When we went to the acknowledgement, we weren't able to see that right away, so that payment got rejected. So we received a bill from Clay County for interest penalty and a, I think, cancelled check fee on that. We did request in writing to have the penalty and interest waived, but we're here tonight to hopefully just have the penalty waived and refunded. We did submit a check in full for the penalty, the taxes and interest towards the end of January. Our corporate office was closed from Christmas till January 6th, so we had no one in the office to get the notice that was, I think, dated before the end of the year prior. So based on our timely filing history, we have a, feel like we have a very good timely filing record for both filing our personal property returns and filing our real estate and personal property taxes. So we, I'm here today to hopefully get that, have your good graces, and have that piece refunded.
If you would remain there for a moment, I see at least one commissioner would like to inquire, so Commissioner Withington, you are recognized.
So I went back and I looked, and I couldn't find it, but I had a, I kind of feel like, weren't you guys here for an issue last year also? Wasn't there some kind of issue? Does anybody remember? I thought Hallmark, there was an issue. Okay, I might have been wrong, but so you're saying the issue was that you guys entered the wrong routing number?
Well, yeah, apparently that was the issue. We didn't realize we did at the time. We, our bank account number has extra zeros in it, and I think our tax analyst keyed in one extra zero, so when we went to the checkout page, it doesn't show, it shows the, I'm trying to remember, it shows one of the account numbers, either routing or bank account number. One of them's kind of Xed out. I'm pretty sure it's the bank account number.
Okay. Well, Jay's an expert at giving this little spiel on how we can't do anything unless it's a county error, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we deny this, since it's not a county error, but Jay will, Jay will probably give you a more detailed spiel that he's practiced over the last couple of years, so.
Motion has been made to pass 2025-38 with a box marked "Denied." With that, we now have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Withington, do you have any further comments to make before I go to the next speaker? Commissioner Carpenter, you are the next, please proceed.
Thank you, yes, I'll, in a moment, let Commissioner Johnson speak to that, that point. I want to ask a quick question on the, didn't receive the date before the end of the, so our records show that we sent the mail notice on December 20th. Are you saying you didn't get that before the end of the year, or before y'all left for Christmas?
We didn't get it before, yeah, we didn't get that letter before we left for the holiday.
And when was the holiday break?
Most of our department was out on the 24th, but then our offices were completely closed from Christmas through, up until January 6th, which I believe was that.
Got you. Well, look, first, let me just say, big fan of Hallmark, very grateful that y'all are present in the community, Clay County, is glad you're here. Obviously, throughout Kansas City, been an important corporate entity, and the city has been made much better by your presence. I do suspect Commissioner Johnson will address what Commissioner Withington referenced, which is state law, very explicitly says that there has to be an error on the part of the county in order to grant these kinds of waivers. It does not allow latitude to county commissions like ours. I think at a, at some point here, we'll ask the county council if he sees, you know, any window here in which, you know, perhaps we could do that, but certainly my initial inclination is that Commissioner Withington is correct. And I am sorry that, you know, that a simple clerical error has resulted in a fairly sizable fee. Obviously, this is an unfortunate situation. The mail of the notice went out the 20th, and you don't, you don't, y'all don't think that you received it before the 24th?
We can't verify that. I can't verify it 100% because I was actually out of the office.
Got you.
With a family matter out of state, so, yes.
Because we have, the reason I ask is we have had issues with USPS, as have other folks around the country.
Oh, yeah.
And so we have had situations in which mail did not get delivered, and so if we felt like that was the situation here, we might have more latitude, but as, you know, without being able to know that, it's hard, hard to say one way or the other, of course.
No, I don't think that was certified, though, right, from your, or was it, or do you know?
I presume that it was, but I can't speak to that. The gentleman's asking if it was certified, mail. No, okay, it was not, all right. So, like I said, I'll pass the baton here to Commissioner Johnson, but like I said, state law has been pretty restrictive in this domain, and we would need some, some kind of county error, I think, in order to, in order to do the waiver. But again, you know, want to express our gratitude for your presence here in the county, obviously. A lot of jobs, a lot of, a lot of good taxes generated, and a fan of the cards, too, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Well, you know, before Commissioner Johnson used to give these speeches, I got to do it, but I'm going to save it for him. But I do think the gist of it has been given by my colleagues. I'll just say, Mr. Sorenson, I will echo everyone's appreciation for Hallmark, what they do in this community, in this entire region, but it is very clear what state law says, and unfortunately, an extra zero is going to be pretty costly. I hate to say it, but as, as your position relies on processes and keeping to those processes, so does ours. And so because this is not a fault of either our offices within the county, it's, you know, there are just actions we can take and there are actions we cannot. And I would say that you are not the first to come before us with a very similar situation. We've had others and folks, you know, just residents that live in the county that have encountered that same sort of issue, who have equally been great taxpayers to us, who have equally invested their, their time and treasure here in Clay County, and yet we still have to provide them that bad news. And I'm afraid that I will be voting for this, this, this motion that's been made. And so I'm delivering bad news, but I, I, I still appreciate everything that you and Hallmark does in this community, so it's nothing personal.
Oh, no, no, we get it, we just, it's my, we, I'm a, well, our company, my CFO says Hallmark, we need to be good stewards of our finances and our assets, and as a compliance manager, I take good pride in our compliance that we do, because we file thousands of returns and make.
Absolutely.
Payments across the country, so.
Absolutely.
I understand the rules, so we, but we did want to, I appreciate the opportunity to at least present the matter and just provide a little more feedback on it.
Absolutely, no, and I appreciate you coming. I'm sorry that, at least I'm giving you some bad news, and maybe others will as well, but we don't want to diminish what your company means to this, to this community.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson? So, just so I understand this right, the tax bill was just slightly over $59,000. You guys sent an E-check for $590,000?
No.
You added an extra zero?
Well, when we, as part of the process, you have to enter in your bank account and routing number. We have the right routing number, but they.
Oh, okay, so it wasn't the value number, it was the routing number that was wrong?
Yes, it was the routing number.
Okay.
Because we have, there's three or four different zeros.
Okay.
Altogether, and she.
Got it, yeah, this, we've had that before, too, so the, the error was on the routing number that was in there, not the actual amount.
Yeah.
Because it says here that the E-check was sent on the 13th, December 13th. On Monday, December 16th, it was, a payment was posted to the account, and then on Thursday, December 19th, it looks like the bank took it back. Is that right?
I mean, that would make sense.
Says collector received notice payment was returned as a R-03 code. Does that mean the bank took it back, I'm assuming?
Well, I would say the bank really ever, never actually sent it. What happened is when then, when the bank processed it, they couldn't process it because the account number, the routing number was incorrect. And so then, then the E-code came back that said it was invalid, and so there was no transaction.
Okay. So here's the speech, and I'll, I'll condense it for you, but the speech that they're talking about is, state law is very clear when it comes to this kind of stuff, and I don't agree with it, by the way, but it's very clear that we do not have the authority to reverse this kind of stuff unless it's our fault, unless it's the county's fault. In this case, obviously, it was an error on someone on your part. In my mind, I think an error like that, an honest error, that you come back and say, hey, we're sorry, you tried to pay it as soon as you found out about it, we had some issues because of the holidays, to me, I don't think that's what the law is for. I think, I think the law is designed for, and this is where I don't like, I think government gets too big and gets in their own way and doesn't know how to see the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law. And of course, our attorney's going to look at the letter of the law and say, hey, you guys can't approve this. I don't like that. I don't like the fact that this is how government works. I think sometimes the laws aren't good, and someone has to challenge those laws. This is one of those things where I think you guys tried your, you guys tried to do the right thing, you weren't trying not to pay, you weren't trying not to pay on time, you paid a ton of money, and as a result, you're going to get hit with over $6,000 in penalties for this. $6,000, which is most, more than most people's property tax bill as a whole, but you guys are going to get $6,000 penalty because someone put an extra O on their routing number, even though it was paid on time, and as soon as you found out about it, you guys fixed it, but happened to be, I don't know, a couple of days late. I don't like that, and that's one of the things where I'm willing to challenge the law on that kind of thing, and say, you know, there's got to be something cut out of the law to fix something like that. So even though the law is pretty clear and says we can't do that, and it sounds like most of my colleagues are going to vote in favor of denying this, that's why they're going to vote that way, because that's what the law says, and that's what our attorney's going to tell us. I'm going to vote no, because I don't think you should have to pay this, just because I don't like the law. I think we need to challenge the law. I think someone needs to say, hey, you know what, Clay County's doing something different, we need to take them to court on this. I think it needs to be challenged, quite frankly. I doubt you're going to get your money back, based on what we're here tonight, but I'm going to be a no vote on, on denying it, just for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
That seems to cover all comments by the commission on this. Does staff have anything to add? They, both, I believe, comments in our paperwork reflected staff said that there was not a mistake on the part of the county. Is there anything that staff would like to add to those comments? Anyone else wishing to speak? If you'd like to go ahead and give us a kind of a concluding set of remarks before we go to a vote, please feel free to do so.
Okay. No, I mean, again, to echo my earlier comments, we, as you commented as well, we are a good steward to Clay County, we pay a lot of property taxes, real estate taxes, we love being in the area, we got the distribution center in Liberty. Yeah, for a lot, personally, it hurts me because it feels like it's coming out of my check account, checking account, bank account, but I understand the rules behind it and the state rulings behind it. But again, I do appreciate the opportunity, so, thank you.
Any more questions or comments before we go to closure? Seeing none, Commissioner Withington, I believe it is your motion, so you are recognized for any closing comments and to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Motion passes five-one.
Thank you for being here this evening. That brings us to the next item on our regular agenda, that would be 2024-41. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-41 is a request of waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error. This is a request by Mr. and Mrs. Randolph. I believe that the applicant was supposed to be here this evening, was the message that we got, but I do not see them in the audience.
Commissioner Withington, you're seeking recognition?
Are we able to push this back until they can be here? Because I had questions, they say that, I'm looking here, what did they say? They said they mailed, they said they mailed it on the, on the 30th of December, but the check is dated January 3rd, so I was leaning towards, you know, like I always have, to wait, you know, side with them, but then when I see that the check was dated, that, so I have questions, so is it, can we, can we push this until they can make it?
I believe we can. Mr. Counselor, could you go ahead and craft us the most appropriate motion, whether it is to table or whether it's to reschedule? Can you go ahead and give us some guidance? And then Commissioner Withington, are you going to want to be recognized for that motion if it, when?
Well, I, I don't know if anybody else has anything to talk, you know?
If you, so if you make that motion, we would only be able to discuss that particular motion if we know what it is.
Lawson's waiting to see what they want to do.
Well, the thing is, the other option is, we could continue to discuss this, then take that motion.
Yeah, we do that.
And then, so either way, if we want to discuss the matter a little bit more, but if the motion's made, that will lock that option.
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure if we could push it, we did, because I want to, I have, you know, I just want to question with, question if they really did send it on the 30th.
I believe we can, I just want to make sure we have the most appropriate motion possible. So Counselor, what would you recommend as far as the motion?
At the time that the motion's ready, I think, you know, there are multiple ways to get there, I think a motion to table until a date certain would be ideal, and I know next week may be a full agenda potentially, so maybe two weeks?
We certainly could, as I said, staff reaches out to the applicants and tries to verify if they're willing to be here. So we, we did have a confirmation they would be here, so I'm not sure what occurred that they're not here this evening. If it is a desire of the commission to, you know, to table it or move it to another agenda, then we can reach out to the applicant and, and check their availability for another meeting, it's whatever the commission would like to do.
Okay, so the motion would be to table until next meeting? Is that the motion you would recommend?
Probably not the next meeting. I mean, I understand the next agenda may be a full already, or quite full, so maybe two weeks would be a suggestion.
Okay, I think that makes, makes more sense, because you're right, next week will be a rather full agenda. So the recommended motion, when a commissioner sees fit to make it, would be to table 2025-41 for, until our meeting two weeks from tonight. So with that, Commissioner Wagner, I believe you were wishing to be recognized. Commissioner Withington, I will come back to you if you don't mind.
Thank you. Well, I am okay with either taking action tonight or, or holding it for a couple of weeks. My, my issue is the same as what our colleague has identified. I will just simply say, in all the checks I've written in all of my life, I don't believe I had the foresight to be able to know when a check would actually arrive at its destination such that I would write it for that date. So I will just simply say that the bar is going to be set very high, and I mean, I may test them on other things that they can predict in order to be able to say that I would agree with, with going forward in waiving fees and penalties. So that being said, if we expect that bar to be reached in a couple of weeks, I'm okay with deferring, but if that bar is not going to be reached, I'll be voting against waiving those fees and penalties, whether that's done today or in the future. But just to put it out there, I got some problems on this one, so I'll just leave it at that. I'm okay with whatever direction we wish to go. Thank you.
By the way, I'll be recognizing Commissioner Johnson next, but just for those who might be watching and are not up on parliamentary procedure, motion to table is a privileged motion. The discussion would cease at that point, and a vote would be taken on the table motion, so that is why we are discussing this as we are right now. Then, once all commissioners have had the ability to speak on this subject, then I would, I would prefer at that point to entertain a motion to table or whatever the pleasure of the commission is with that. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I would like to actually hear from the applicant on this one, just because we, we've had troubles in the past with the post office, and I think the law is, as long as it's postmarked by the 31st, I think, it's good, no matter when we get it, as long as it's postmarked. And a lot of times, like I said, we're having issues, so I think if the applicant can bring, actually, it's always nice to see the applicant in front of us, there's a little bit of a, hey, how much do we trust this person, how much do we think they're trying to pull one over on, on us, and that's, it's easy to kind of judge that in person. At the same time, maybe an opportunity to present a little bit more evidence of, that would help support the fact that they, if in fact they did mail it on the 30th, or anything they have to be able to show that they did that, or corroborating evidence or anything in that, I'd love to hear that. So I think it'd be a good idea to give them an opportunity to come in and, and give us that information if they have that.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, the only question I'd have is, and this is for Barbara, our illustrious collector. If you got this check on the 30th, as an example, and it was dated January the 3rd, at that point, on the 30th, what would you have done?
Probably processed it.
Oh, you would?
Probably, we probably wouldn't have noticed the date if the check, the envelope was dated the 31st. We would post it for the 31st.
Okay, okay.
And the, the bank would process it.
Sure.
Because we received it and we have the envelope to prove that we received it on the 31st.
Okeydoke, thank you.
Before I entertain a motion to table, do any other commissioners wish to make any Very well, so if there is, we can either make a motion based on this, or we can make motion to table. Commissioner Withington, you are recognized.
No, I agree with Scott, bar's going to be pretty damn high on this one, but I'd like to make a motion that we table this for two weeks to the, what is that, the 20th?
Very well. Motion's made to table 2025-41 until February 20. That is a privileged motion, so all discussion will cease. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington? Commissioner Withington? Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Zero.
Thank you. That brings us to our next item under our regular agenda. That's 2025-40. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-40 is approve invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office for the period of January 25th to January 31st. There are 10 invoices totaling
Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized?
Move to approve 2025-40.
Motion's been made for approval of 2025-40. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, I understand it for my, so I could say.
Okay, very well. Please, okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Next item is 2025-43. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-43 is approve a cooperative agreement between Clay County, Missouri, and Ray County, Missouri Sheriff's Office for transfer of ownership of a body scanner for use in the Ray County Detention Center. And Captain Agdarian is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commission. Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office is currently in possession of a body scanner that had been used in our detention facility since about 20, late 2018. Last year, with the acceptance of the JAG Grant, we were able to purchase a new body scanner for our detention center that has a significantly smaller footprint and has allowed us to make use of space in the detention center that we were desperately needing. So the current body scanner, well, the old body scanner that we currently have, is still, it's still in workable condition, and it's not the kind of item that we can just surplus to anywhere. So we had a request from the Ray County Sheriff's Office to utilize that body scanner in the detention center there in Ray County. So with your approval, we would like to surplus that, that instrument to the Ray County Sheriff's Office.
I think it's a great idea. The, this promotes the cooperation between the Northland Counties ourselves and Ray, as well as the other counties. So I certainly am happy to see us being able to work and to help the other counties out. And that cooperation is something that I think is, well serves our citizens. Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2025-43.
Motion's been made for approval of 2025-43. Further discussion? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Always good to see you, Captain. I've always got to ask you a question.
Absolutely.
So my question is, are, is there a price to this surplusing? Are we just giving it to them?
We are giving it to them.
And why?
I'm going to defer that to the sheriff. There, if he would like to come up and speak. There are a lot of things going on. There's a lot of things in motion right now in Ray County. Their detention center has, has some desperate need for upgrades. They have a brand-new sheriff now, just like they had a brand-new sheriff four years ago. There's a lot on his plate right now. And one of those things is the safety of the detention center.
Sure.
And we believe that it is in the best interest of Ray County to help them out right now. But I would defer if the sheriff would like to speak to that further.
Well, we haven't seen the sheriff in some time, so I'm glad my query could bring him forward. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Sheriff, go right ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. Will Aiken, Clay County Sheriff. Really, Amy just answered the question, but just to take it one step further. Ray County, the things that happen in Ray County affect Clay County indirectly. And there's a lot that does happen in Ray County, because the people that we try to hold accountable for their actions, criminals, they think they can escape us by going into Ray County. So when they capture these, these criminals, they have to take them into their facility. Now, if you've paid any attention to Ray County and the issues that they've had over the last four years, they need a lot of help. And they have actually requested some assistance from the Ray County, or Clay County Sheriff's Office and Clay County to work with them. And I've been working with the Ray County Commissioners, as well as the sheriff, on creating a strategic approach, which is really a phased model in getting their jail updated to the point where they can start bringing their inmates back. As we all know, because we went through this a couple of years ago, we, when you house inmates out, that costs a lot of money. Ray County doesn't have that kind of money. So why, I mean, could we make some money off of this, this device? Absolutely. We can put it out there and we can have somebody pay for it. But the reality is, this device is only good for maybe two or three more years, because even though the device itself is good, the software is not. And that's the reason why we updated ours with a smaller footprint. And so at least for the amount of years that Ray County Sheriff's Office can get out of this device, it will still benefit not just Ray County, but really the Northland, like how you put.
Okay. Well, I thank you for that answer. And I would just say, you know, anytime we surplus anything, if it has a usable life, there should be some value that we set to it. I understand we're able to replace that because we have the JAG Grant, so we are not technically paying for it, per se, as long as it gets through the system fast enough at any rate. But, but, and certainly, to your point about other counties, the counties around us, do we have a, do we have some skin in that game? Then yes, I would agree that we do. But certainly, my question isn't that we just, you know, charge them thousands and thousands of dollars. Sometimes we only charge a buck for things, but at least it's whatever. I'm, your answer is sufficient for my query, so thank you very much. But I will just point out there, just for the future, anytime we just give stuff away, I'm going to be asking why.
Absolutely, and rightfully so. Whenever we move forward with something like this, and when I, and I hear "give it to them," it's really we're gifting it to them, because that's, that's what it is. But we're always very selective on the needs of that agency. You know, something that we, the county administrator and I, and both of our teams, working on, you know, there are other things too, but rather than just saying, hey, we're going to go ahead and gift this to you, no, we work within the county first to try to see where those items can be better placed. And then, if anything is left over, then we'll, we'll pass it on. But we're, we're still very selective. And if the commission really, I mean, if you want me to charge them a dollar, then I can make that recommendation. Maybe a symbolic gesture of, hey, you're paying for this item. But I think, you know, we get our money's worth by allowing our partnering, you know, adjacent county having this ability to scan.
Sure. Well, that can't even buy eggs anymore, so I'm not even going to worry about that. But, but I will fall on the notion that if we're doing someone a solid, then down the road, they may do a solid for us, and that'll be sufficient. I also appreciate your comment about looking inward to see if there's opportunities within the family, although I don't think we can use one of these at Smithville Lake, so it sounds really good to just send it home.
Yeah. And you know, and I even asked the question, you know, can our facility use a second one? Well, it's, our operations doesn't support that at all, because you have to have the amount of personnel to operate it.
Sure.
And so it was just like, okay, it's, this is kind of a no-brainer. I mean, we can put it out there, but, you know, our, our replacement has already been installed. So we already have that in our facility. And we waited till the last minute to, to make this transfer, this recommendation transferred over.
Well, I appreciate your answer and appreciate you addressing my molehill. And, and I appreciate, and I'll be happy to support this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
I just want to add on to what the sheriff had said. It's a very good question from Commissioner Wagner. He's got a few every now and then.
I think it strikes once in a while.
That's a very good question. But I will tell you, having in my past life been a police chief, the idea of giving away stuff from one law enforcement agency to another is not only very common, it's more, more often the default. That's usually what happens. Rarely are you going to charge another law enforcement agency for a piece of equipment you're giving to them, for a couple of reasons. One, we're on the same team. And like the sheriff pointed out, another county will be using it, but we still benefit from that other county being able to use that, first of all. Their thing is, again, remember, law enforcement is a, is a not-for-profit company. We don't make money off the things that we do. So we often share information. We share, I say "we" like I'm still in the game. I'm not in the game anymore. But they often share information, they often share equipment, they often share personnel. So it's very common. And I know, for some people seeing that, you might think, well, I say, that's worth, that's worth, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. But in most cases, you usually can't sell the stuff. And if you do, it's, it's usually for pennies on the dollar. And it's, you get more juice for the squeeze by, by giving it to another law enforcement agency to use. So it is a great question, but I 100% agree with what they're doing and why they're doing it. But I just ought to clarify that from my perspective.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. So I take to heart what Commissioner Johnson said. And I also know, I know our sheriff to, I know you mean it when you want, you know, more good public safety throughout the region, and that this type of cooperation is helpful. And I know you take that role seriously. Wasn't going to say anything, but Commissioner Wagner did inspire me a little bit with your, with your molehill. And so I'll just say this, before y'all came, before the commission expanded, you know, it's now, now my fifth year on the commission. And I'm sure you recall, our first couple of years, my first couple of years on the commission, we did a number of transfers to Ray County with a number of different items. I couldn't give you an estimate on what the total value was, but it, not too terribly low. And I think that's okay. I support, I voted yes every time. I think it was a good decision every time. I recall having some conversations with our county treasurer at that time, too. He had represented Ray County in the legislature. And, and, you know, part of the pitch was Ray County is struggling financially. And I take that to heart, and I, and I do like helping people when they're struggling financially. What I will say is, we're now five years later, and at some point, they got to figure out a tax base that pays for the stuff, for their own stuff. And, you know, they had their troubles with the sheriff, you know that better than me. And so I, I do, I'm going to happily vote yes on this one. And I, I do want us to also try to maybe send the message that I don't know what they need to do tax-base-wise to get in better shape with their jail and their public safety. But I hope we're kind of nudging them in that direction, too, so that their taxpayers can pay for their stuff, too.
Oh, man.
Does that make sense?
So, yeah, I mean, you know, I can't argue the fact that they need to figure it out over there. And, and I just want to reassure the commissioners that I'm not looking for stuff to give to Ray County. It's just things that come up, and it's just like, now I have this big piece of equipment, what do I do with it? And to Commissioner Johnson's point, we can put it on Purple Wave or something like that, and somebody else will say, oh, I can use that. I'll give you 50 bucks. So it might be a little bit more than a dollar, but you're really, it's kind of like an auction. And so, yeah, we, as things come up, then we kind of look at our neighbor to the east, but we're not looking for, for stuff to give. And, and on that point, we've actually helped other sheriff's offices out throughout the state over the last couple of years with different pieces of equipment, because, you know, when, when you think about sheriff's offices in the state of Missouri, there are 89 third-class counties, and I think 17 first-class counties. First-class counties, we have the resources. Even if we have to scrape by every once in a while, third-class counties, they go without. And when you go without, and you have a sheriff's office that, that covers the entire county, and if, I mean, there's one county that's 800 square miles, and they have two deputies. And so, I mean, just the little things that we can help out with, I mean, we should always strive to help law enforcement, because, again, I talk about Ray County, but we deal with people, oh my gosh, several counties over, thinking they can get away from us. Well, no, we send deputies over there, and we work with that sheriff, and we pick them up. So, you know, just because something happens to the boot heel, doesn't mean that it doesn't indirectly, or sometimes directly, impact us over here in the Kansas City area. So.
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense to me. And just figured I'd share my thoughts in that direction. But I support what we're doing here, and happy to vote yes. Thanks, Sheriff.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, I, I agree with what Commissioner, not often, but I do agree with Commissioner Johnson's statement, that, you know, we do have to kind of interact with the different departments. I think it's good to be able to cement those relationships between Clay and Ray, you know, those that are around us. I, I think that's a great idea. This piece of equipment isn't something that we could use, like somebody said, at the lake or at some other place in the county. It is very specialized. But I would say this, that I agree with Commissioner Wagner strongly, that anything that we can utilize in another department within the county, while the sheriff's department may not be a money producer, so to speak, this county needs to be a money producer of some nature, so that we can take care of roads and bridges and all the other things that we have to contend with. So I think in future, anytime, whether it's the sheriff or any other department, that looks at donating to some other entity, I think it's great to stop and scrutinize how we can utilize it within our own, you know, charity begins at home. And so we can use it here. But in this instance, you know, we, we couldn't have used it anywhere but with you. So, yeah.
I think that we need to promote these relationships we have with our fellow counties. I think it's great that we have a good law enforcement, cross-county-lines relationship with our immediate neighbors here in the Northland. And I think we need to be thinking somewhat in terms of a Northland, not just Clay County, not just Platte, not just Ray. Obviously, we can't give away, you know, lots and lots of goodies, but I think this qualifies as specialized and of limited dollar value. I mean, I'm sure it's got, you know, a dollar value to it. But if the lifespan, projected lifespan is relatively short, this would help Ray County to be able to kind of bridge that gap as they become, as they get a better handle on where they want to go as a county, and how they want to handle revenues, and how they want to generate those revenues. And this goes beyond law enforcement. At Mark, I have interacted with all three Ray County Commissioners, and there is a, it's a building of a relationship that means that we can, when we need help on some issue that is important to Clay County, at Mark, or at some of the other entities, that we have, have willing partners who will essentially have our back on these things. So this, I think, builds a relationship, and it builds goodwill beyond just the law enforcement community. This helps to bring us all together. And I think that is, that is a very constructive effort indeed. If there are no further comments, I will go to Commissioner Johnson. I believe it was his motion.
I close.
Okay, you close. Please call the roll on 2025-43. Forty-three, forty-three, yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes, six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to the final item on this evening's regular agenda. That would be 2025-44. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-44 is approving a printing and postage for communication for the Senior Real Estate Property Tax Relief Program. Administrative Services Officer Jacobs is here to provide information about this correspondence.
Please proceed.
Deanna Jacobs, Administrative Services Officer. What you have before you is a bid for the printing of 48,884 postcards to be sent out to the individuals in the county that paid their property tax, their real estate property tax via a mortgage or escrow. We felt it was important to make sure that they were notified of the senior tax relief program, just as we did to the individuals who received the information in their bill. So some of us got a bill for our real estate taxes, others, that bill went to the mortgage company. So this is our effort to make sure that we do everything we can to reach every citizen of Clay County and let them know of the real estate relief program, or the senior real estate tax program.
Commissioner Johnson?
First of all, I'll just say, I love this. I think this is great customer service. Not too many government agencies are going to send out postcards saying, hey, you can save money and pay less taxes. But we're doing it. I think it's great. And I think, and I think it's worth what we have to pay to, to send this out. So with that, I'd like to approve 2025-44.
Motion's been made for approval of 2025-44. Further discussion? I would just like to add to Commissioner Johnson's observations. This is yet another example of how I think Clay County has done an excellent job in putting this program together, informing our citizens, and making the process as easy as possible. I'm not su, I think I heard one, one kind of complaint, and I think it was really not particularly valid. I'll let that go at that. But it is almost uniformly seen by our citizens as, as a, as a great thing. The process is as easy as it can be made. There are moving parts. But I, I don't think that we can, we can give enough kudos to staff for putting together this program and making sure that it is run as smoothly. This is yet another example of how Clay County has advanced over the last handful of years, gone from, from where we were to, I think, a county that a lot of other counties look to, to see how you do things that are going to serve our citizens, and how you do them correctly and efficiently. So I'm, I am thrilled that we're doing this, and the idea that we are leaving no effort unturned to make sure effort unturned to make sure citizens are aware of what their government is doing is, is highly admirable. Further discussion? Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized. I close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
That completes our regular agenda. That brings us to reports. We have one report. Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. That was a great segue into the next topic, a report which is, I'm very pleased to present to you all the 2024 Annual Performance Report. It highlights the county's progress over the past year, and our staff has done an outstanding job achieving key goals that reflect our commitment for efficiency, for collaboration, and for customer service, which you just heard a great example of. So you have at your place a sort of a paper copy of our 2024 Annual Performance Report. Tomorrow, it will be launched, the electronic version of it will be launched on the Clay County website, and with your indulgence, I'm just gonna bring it up just very briefly, and just talk a little bit about some of the key things that are in that document. And so this is the electronic book that was out on the website, and will be out there. So one of the key things is, we certainly talk about the county's vision statement about innovation, welcoming, safe, and being the desired destination for families, businesses, and visitors. And so there are several different components in this document. One is certainly our vision, values, and mission, and also identifying the leaders of the organization in 2024. But one of the things that's a little bit different that we've done in this document that we've not done in the past is, you know, we wanna make sure and exhibit that 24 hours a day, there are employees that are dedicated to providing services and opportunities to our citizens. And so we kind of gave an example here of what does a 24-hour period look like a day in Clay, starting at midnight all the way until 11:00 PM. So there are activities, there are functions, not only by our staff, whether they're called out or they're on duty those particular hours, or, again, trying to be convenient with our citizens, that they can do business with their government whenever is convenient with them. I believe we received our first application for the Senior Tax Credit Program at 12:20 AM, and so that's our goal. We know that, you know, our citizens have needs and expectations, and being able to reach out and do business with us when it's convenient for them, so that we tried to give sort of a synopsis of that. This report also outlines accomplishments within each focus area of our strategic plan, demonstrating measurable progress in areas that matter most to our residents. And you'll also find, and so as you go through the document, and the, and this by any means is not everything that was accomplished in 2024 by our staff, but we try to highlight those key things by focus areas that occurred in 2024. And in addition to having, we've also kind of put in throughout here some compliments and some things that we've heard back from our citizens about examples of outstanding customer service, about new programs, about efficiencies that they've notified, because we appreciate hearing that from our citizens. In addition to highlighting our accomplishments, you also will find towards the back of the document, our performance metrics. And so we have identified those key performance indicators, and then we also have additional metrics that showcase our ongoing efforts to improve our services and enhance our operations and efficiencies. And so you'll find those performance key metrics and our additional metrics, again, organized by our five focus areas throughout this document. So we hope everyone has a chance to go out and take a look at that particular document. But because it's spread out that way, I kinda wanted to give you a summary of our, our metrics, right? We do a lot, but you don't know how you're doing, you don't know whether you're moving the needle or marching forward if you don't measure things. And so there are key performance indicators that have been identified by each focus area. We have a total of 23 KPIs, and so you see on this particular chart, the number by each focus area, and then how is the outcome? So just to give an example, in safety and well-being, we have seven KPIs. Of the seven, four of them either met or exceeded the target that was established for 2024. Two of them improved from 2023, moved us closer to the target, and then we have one that we feel like, well, we underperformed. We didn't hit our target, we didn't improve in the prior year, so we need to take a look at that and see what we can do to continue to, to march forward with our progress. But if you look at the total for 23 KPIs, you'll see that a significant portion of them are equal to or better than moving us closer to the target, or basically meets or exceeds our target that was set. And we look at the target every year, so when we meet or exceed the target, well, now it's time to move the target, right? You've accomplished that, so we wanna set the target a little different, and how do we work towards making those improvements? And then we also have additional metrics by focus area. They're not our KPIs, but they're things that we measure. So we have 42 other identified metrics, and you see on the far right, we have several that, they're in the other category, 'cause they're newly established. This is sort of a new program with the county of actually diving in and doing our metrics. We've done it the last year or so, so we're continuing to move and improve and look at those things we should be measuring, and how does it tell the story how we're doing? And so we've established new ones, and if they're new, we may not have any historical data, and so they will be built upon, and you'll see the results of that when we look at the results of 2025. But again, you can see, we have 42 total additional metrics, and of that, you know, about 71% of them have either seen improvement from 2023, or they have met or exceeded the targets. So with that, I certainly want to express my appreciation to the commission for your leadership and your support, which have been instrumental in guiding these efforts. Your commitment to the strategic priorities has helped drive positive change and outcomes for the county this past year. Additionally, I certainly want to extend my gratitude to all the employees across the organization, for it's their hard work and their commitment to making Clay County a great place to live and to work. With that, I leave you with the 2024 Annual Report. Happy to answer any questions, and if you, as you look through it, if you have questions, please reach out, we'd be happy to provide you additional information.
Thank you for the report, and thank you for the publication. It is both creative and user-friendly, even, even an elected official like me can get the gist of it pretty quickly. So I appreciate the, the ability to be able to reach out and, and look at this information in such a user-friendly way. Commissioner Wagner, you were seeking recognition?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of comments. Number one, good job whoever designed this, good job. I always appreciate good design, and, and it's full of great copy, and just as we've tried to make, of course, the auditor's not here tonight, but just as he tries to put forward information that is digestible, this is very digestible, and I just wanna thank you for that.
And, and I certainly want to give a shout-out to our communication team, to Megan and Squall, because they're, well, we put the data together and gave it to them, it's their creative eye that put it together.
They did a great job, so just, they've earned their keep one more year, and probably beyond that. No, great job. The other, the other comment, and, and probably it's one that's probably best suited to your successor, whomever that is, but it does strike me that if we are meeting and exceeding targets, it's time to change the targets at some point. And so, and if we're doing a good job, which we're doing, the, the challenge goes down next to see how we can improve even more.
Well, this is actually a report and a look-back of 2024, but in the 2025 budget, we do provide in the budget book the targets for 2025, and you will see those change. You're right, if you are hitting your target, then it's time to move the target.
Yeah.
And, and continue to make improvements.
Right. Well, just the, the data that you have here in the presentation, you've just made, just speak to the great job that everyone's doing, but we don't rest on our laurels, because you can only beat up Jackson County only so much until you've got to improve yourself, right?
It is so much fun.
But, although it may be so much fun, and, and I know those folks, and, and I joke, but whether it's them or anybody else, we always press on, and so I just want to, to recognize the great work that's being done, but we don't rest. We'll continue to do better, and I look forward to seeing how we execute those. But thank you, everyone.
Commissioner Johnson. Yes, thank you. I too want to echo my, echo my thanks for, for this, not only what's put together here, but more importantly, all the work behind it. You know, we've been talking, and I've been hitting on it pretty hard the last couple of years, about the rebranding of Clay County. This is, this is proof that we're rebranding. This is proof that we're going in the right directions, and things are changing here in Clay County. I think sometimes it's difficult for our employees to see how big a difference they're making, because they're, they're kind of in the middle of it, and it, it kinda moves kinda slow, but from those who are outside looking in, it's huge. And our staff, and not only the, I know there's a lot of department heads here tonight, but please pass on to all of your, all of your employees below that, that we really appreciate. I, I truly appreciate the work they're doing, I appreciate the direction this county is going. We're making some, we've made some big strides the last few years, and things are heading in the right direction, and we wanna keep things moving in that direction. So just, just wanna say thank you for that, and acknowledge the great work that our employees have been doing, and let's keep it up, keep Clay County growing in that, in that right direction. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah, I think, I think I say this every week, and I truly, truly mean it from my heart, we have the best staff. You know, I, I think they're more aware than you think they are. They, they see the difference in things than the way it was before, and they appreciate it, and they work so hard, and I can't give them enough recognition for all that they do. So I appreciate all of you for the jobs that you do, and just, just like that postcard going out, we've been so blessed with the staff that looks at every single possibility. Who did we miss? We can't let anybody go unrecognized to get that 190 money out to them, and, and so I'm, I'm thrilled that they work so hard on that, but they worked hard on everything that they do, so great job, guys, just keep doing what you're doing, and hopefully we'll keep doing what we're doing.
Any further comments? Seeing none. Did I just go down, or was it me? With that, that will end our reports. That brings us to county administrator comments. Administrator?
Just a couple of items, please. Just remind the commission that county offices will be closed on Wednesday, the 12th, in observance of Lincoln's birthday. Also, I think everyone should have received the invitation to the groundbreaking for the Law Enforcement Resource Center, which is set for next Friday, the 14th, at 2:00 out at the facility on 116th Street. I'm not sure who's in charge of weather, so I suggest you dress warmly. And the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, the 13th, at 6:00 here in the chambers, and I don't know, I've heard that there's some game going on this Sunday, so we certainly want to wish all the best to the Chiefs.
Thank you. That brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Carpenter?
Go Chiefs!
There we go. Commissioner Thompson?
In the spirit of all the red, go Chiefs!
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, some of you have made comments about my apparel tonight. It's not too often you get to wear essentially a Snuggie to work, but when the opportunity arises, I'm gonna take advantage of it. Obviously, it's a big weekend, the Chiefs are in the Super Bowl again, and my buddy Keith from California sent me this, so I can celebrate this weekend, so I wanna thank him for that, and go Chiefs!
Commissioner Withington?
I think it was Scottsdale.
Oh, I, I saw you pushed your button.
Oh, I was just waiting for you to, Scott, Scottsdale.
Okay, well, we will just go that route then. Commissioner Wagner? Let me get back here.
Thank you. First of all, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Johnson if he can tell Keith that we're all jealous of this thing that he's got, and if he can get him here by Saturday, that would be fantastic. All kidding aside, go Chiefs, great weekend for this, for this city, and glad to be a part of it.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes, that, that is a hell of a gift, you know, when you think about it, that, that's a friend. I want to, kind of a sad note, this past week, we, we lost a lady who was a major asset to Clay County, not just as an office holder, but as a person. Beverly Corm had held office here in Clay County for years. She was very active in politics, she was just a grand lady. I, I often, when I, my husband first ran for office, while we were on opposite sides of the aisle, as they say, she was so gracious and so kind to me, and I always told her that she was my favorite Democrat, and she always has been. Just an amazing woman, can't say enough good things about her, unbelievably intelligent, but so kind in everything that she did, and, and phenomenal at her job. So we'll miss her so very much, and I wish all her family blessings and, and God's protection, and so, live at peace, Beverly.
Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, I just want to say, go Chiefs. Jay looks like he's got a sled and a team of dogs outside waiting, waiting for him. I'm kinda disappointed, three of our commissioners, they don't have red on. I think, I've pointed out several times this year that low-key John's been rooting for the opponent, and I think he, I think we know who he's rooting for this, this weekend without his red, so.
I just want to say that Commissioner Withington's observation is correct, and I want to point out that as is my, my job, sometimes I am the tiebreaker, so that gives us the majority in red. I hope that Commissioner Johnson, you've brought enough jackets for everybody. I will not hold my breath, but I, but I appreciate what everybody is saying, and the great thing about the Chiefs going to the Super Bowl, and it never goes, it never gets old saying that and then watching that. As the Chiefs go to the Super Bowl, it is a unique opportunity for us to come together. We were just kidding a little about Jackson County, and, you know, we are all kind of in the same, well, not kind of, we are all in the same metropolitan area, and it is great that we have something that brings the area together and allows us to be one large community, and I think we all appreciate the fact that we can, that we can celebrate as one. So I would just say, I, you know, go Chiefs, but they're gonna win, let's face it, they're gonna win, they're gonna win. Ah, no, yes, they're gonna win. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.